How about you?
They're buttering.
Let the meeting of the Planning Commission for April 22, 2025 come to order. If you have a phone or device that is audible, if you will, put it on silent or turn it off to keep from interrupting the proceedings. Joe DuPalmer is not here today. My name is Roger Leggett. I'm vice chairman. I'll be conducting the meeting. We have copies of our rules that we go by that's on the back table. If you have any questions of how we proceed our meetings. Do you have any announcements you need to make? There is one announcement that there's a public hearing right here on April 29 from 5:00 to 7:00 here at the Watson Government Complex. It's going to be about the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. It's an open house that's open to everyone. If you will, please come to it. It's a very important meeting for the citizens of the county and our DOT Department to give us an idea of how to proceed in the future. Chris, are you ready?
We're ready to proceed.
Okay. First order of business is going to be the reading of the... Has everybody read the minutes of the last meeting? And if you have, I'd like to have a motion to adopt those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Motion approved and second made. Is there... What's your vote? Okay, it's going to be four, zero, and one. I will be abstaining unless there's a tie vote. If you will sign as vice chairman on this, please. First order of business.
Good afternoon, everyone. First application is 2025-07Z, application by James Aldridge requesting to rezon 6.104 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to I-1 Lot Industrial District for the intended commercial use of heavy equipment rentals. Property is located in landlots 967 and 968. It's District 2, Section 3. It's at the southeast intersection of Laird Road and Bill Caruth Parkway. Part of the property address is 725 Lair Road. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended on this application that it be denied, but if the board chooses to approve, there's five recommended stipulations. The Planning and Zoning Division has had no calls or with concerns or questions at this time, and the applicant is present.
Will applicant come forward, sign in, state your name, and present your case?
Mr. Chairman.
I did want to mention also in your packet was information from the Industrial Building Authority with some of their thoughts and concerns on the project.
Oh, it's not. That was just my copy.
You, sir, go ahead and start.
Yeah, my name is Will Summien with the meeting here to do the planning for this rezon. He is proposing to create I-1 zones here to be able to do equipment rental service. There is two proposed openings already on the road out there that would be used for entrances and could be used for one in and one out in the future. We've read the five zoning stiffs, and the owner is amenable to all five stiffs and adhering to them. I'm here to answer any questions you may have pertaining to the site plan, and the owner is also here to answer any questions you may have about the proposed use or the site itself, so we'll refrain any additional time from here to answer questions or anything.
Does anyone on the Planning Commission have questions for the gentleman?
I've got a question. When you're talking about heavy equipment rental, is that just, you know, the rental practice, or is there going to be like equipment repairs and washdown stations and things of that nature happening on the property as well? Or are you just having tractors sitting out there and somebody coming up and renting one and then hauling them in and out for the rental access, I mean, process?
Thanks for the question. I'm the property owner, James Aldridge, killed by Jim Aldridge.
Sign in on the sign-in sheet there. Question, state your name again.
Thank you, sir. Yes, there will be repair, mainly repair. Used equipment at this time, I don't have the dealership where I'm going to be selling brand new equipment. Not real sure about the rental yet either. It's mainly going to be refurbishing forklifts. That's what the business is doing at this time. Already experienced it. And as far as I know, there's no other business in all the county than Aldridge forklift repair. Most of them are coming out of Atlanta or North Georgia. And I know most everybody here has been by my place many times. I bought this place 30 years ago, been living there 29. And I was there before the Parkway was there. Raised my kids, my family there. Kids went to higher school. And we really enjoy it. When I bought property, I never imagined that road going through it, which at that time they cut three acres to the property and built the road. Also, in recent years, they put a sewer through the property, which, you know, I worked with the county, you know, problem there. So sewer went through, I guess it's been three years now. And then last year, they needed more easement for the sewer for the dude building Alderman that they built next door. They needed more easement to run the sewer, so I agreed to let them do that also. I don't expect a lot of traffic in and out. I know with the zoning board, they basically have, you know, recommend non-approval, but I believe it's mainly because of the employment corridor that I'm in that was established. I'm not sure when they established it, but right off the bat, I'm not hiring 25 people, and that's one of the requirements I know they asked for. I'm looking at four or five employees, but once I get open, the plan is to have probably 25 people or more. But at this time, you know, I can assure you that I'll have four people when I open up. And any, I don't know, any other questions that you would like to ask?
What size, what type of equipment do you plan on having there?
Well, the forklifts that I have at this time will lift about 10,000 pounds. I got diesel, LP, that type. Probably no more than probably 20, 25,000 pound machine. Future, the future, you know, may change, but right now, the biggest machine I've got is about a 20,000 pound machine.
Are those crawler tractors, excavators, those type machines?
Yeah, I have, you know, I have an excavator. I have equipment that I've already had on the property, but that's not what I'm going to be selling. Like I say, my plan is to do repair and be mobile also, and then sell the used equipment once it's been refurbished. That would be what the plan is.
So you'll be doing repairs. Will you also be doing sandblasting and painting as well?
In the refurbishing, yes, probably so.
And you will also rent these?
Ma'am?
You will also rent this equipment?
That, now, I haven't completely made my decision on that. That'll have a lot to do with the insurance, how much liability that I would have to have in order to rent the equipment. If it's feasible for me to, I would, I would rent it, and that's what I'm hoping. And, but right now, I can't say for a fact that I'm going to be renting equipment. It's a lot of, like you say, a lot of liability when you're renting that type of equipment.
Are there any other questions?
I got a follow-up question. It may be for staff. The application that we've got is for a heavy equipment rental.
Yes.
Is how it is presented to us and how we're reviewing that. So the question, and maybe for staff, is if it's not going to be a heavy equipment rental business, it is going to be more of a equipment repair business, how was that evaluation... How was that evaluation process? Are we evaluating the same things or... Because I guess I'm under the impression that we were going to be doing like a heavy equipment rental process where you've got heavy equipment that'll be rented out for various customers, you know, and things of that nature, heavy equipment again, large excavators, track hoes, dump trucks, you know, dozers, things of that nature. That's what I consider heavy equipment, but the rental process, you know, doesn't really sound like we're going to be doing the rental, so...
Can I follow up?
Yes, sir.
Well, the plan, like I say, what I can assure you today is that is my intentions of having to repair, refurbish the machines and sell them and rent them. Like I said, as far as the liability for the rental and all that stuff, I haven't, I don't know if I'm going to be able to get it. I hope I am, but I'll give you an example. The property that adjoins me, y'all approved it about three years ago to be a fueling station, truck stop, and as, you know, as today, there's, it's an empty, it's just like it was when you approved it. I can assure the zoning board, if you give me my, you know, if we can get to zoning, I'm going to do what I tell you I'm going to do. And it's going to create jobs, and my understanding, that's what the county's looking for, more commercial businesses. Now, as far as, when you look at, when you look at the zoning that I'm requesting, there's a whole list of things that fall under that category. So, but my intentions is what it says, rental, rental and refurbishment.
Anybody else have any other questions?
So on your equipment repair, are you going to be working a lot for the public or other contractors repairing their equipment with mobile trucks as well?
Yes, sir. That's the plan, mobile. I don't expect a lot of foot traffic to my place, and it's mainly the customers are going to be people that already, that already know, word of mouth. So I don't really expect a lot of foot traffic.
What about the 3,000 square foot building you have on the property? Will you be utilizing it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I've talked to Chris. I understand I'm going to have to bring it up to the standards that the county is asking, and I'm okay with that.
Anybody else have a question?
I have one back to staff probably and following up with Jason. I'm a little confused about the application itself because it, I understand and I'm with you that you want to refurbish, but the application only had heavy equipment rental services, and that's what... So would this affect, again, the question, would it affect the application and what we're looking at today?
When the application was submitted, it was our understanding that was the proposed use. As I've spelled out in the staff comments, things have changed that it would be possibly some bucket truck rentals, forklift repair, and some tractor rentals, things like that has come up since then. Those would also be required in I-1 district, but I still do not have the most clear understanding exactly what type of heavy equipment rental at this time.
Mr. Robinson, I have a question for you. Have there been citations issued on this property before because of my understanding it's not been in compliance?
There has been some zoning compliance issues, and there was, in previous time, there were some citations issued, not necessarily all zoning, but some possibly other type of ordinance violations.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Callen, if I may add to your question, unless the staff recommendation is denied, if there is an approval, staff has made y'all aware that the applicant has indicated there are additional uses that he desires to engage in. I believe, Chris, I'm correct, that those uses are also permitted within the I-1 district, which is the district that he's seeking to have it amended to. Unless there is a stipulation that limits the use, let's presume for the sake of discussion, I-1 is approved. If, unless there's a stipulation limiting it to one of the identified matters, then he is permitted...
To engage in any I-1 use if I-1 is granted. Does that make sense? And there were some, as Mr. Robinson said, some zoning convictions last year sometime.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of this application? That's in favor of this application? Do you have anything else to present? Okay, if you'll have a seat, you've got like seven or eight minutes left on yours. If you want to come back after opposition, you can.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there anybody in opposition to this application? Anyone in opposition of this application? Seeing none. You still have a couple of minutes, several minutes, sir, Mr. Aldridge. If you've got something else you need to say, you can say it now before we vote. Okay, hearing none? Have you got something to say? Okay, hearing none, I'll request a vote. That's going to be 2025-07Z, application by James Aldridge in Post 3. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny by Mr. Aston.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor of the denial? Okay, that's going to be four, zero, one for denial.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the Board of Commissioners would, at their regular meeting on May 13 at 2:00 PM, would be considering your recommendation.
That's right. It still will be brought up, Mr. Aldridge, it'll still be brought up for the Board of Commissioners on May 13. This is just a recommending body, and they have the final vote on this application, so you're required to be here on that date. And you can present, if you get on the agenda and present, you know, what you need to say... to say at that time, and then they have the final vote. Mr. Robinson, next guest.
Okay. Next application, 2025-04SUP, this is an application by William F. Harrelson, requesting a special use permit on 51.24 acres of R2 suburban residential district for the seasonal event operation of a containment haunted house amusement themed attraction. Property is located in land lots 292, 339, District 19, Section 3. It's on the south side of Holly Springs Road, west of State Route, Highway 101 North. It's in Commission Post 2. Staff has recommended approval. With nine stipulations. And the applicant is present. Uh, we've had a few general calls, we're just questions, and, uh, and we have no noted opposition.
All right. Mr. Harrelson, would you come forward and sign in and state your name for the record?
William F. Harrelson.
All right. Tell us what you want to do.
Well, what we want to do is take 26 containers, mesh them together, and have a, uh, entertainment for Halloween that will last 30 days approximately. And, um, we've done this for eight years and have a pretty good idea of what to do.
Okay, does anyone on the board have a question?
Yeah, I want to ask a question. In your, um, in your letter of intent, you mentioned safety and you mentioned the Polton County Fire Department, um, and the fact that they will be conducting inspections. But then you also say that they'll be on site every night, that you're open. Could you kind of elaborate a little bit on what safety measures and security measures? Because again, safety, of course, for your occupants, but security measures, you know, for, you know, surrounding properties and, you know, things of that nature for, you know, the comers and goers of the, of the events. So, can you kind of speak a little bit more into what safety and security measures you're planning?
During the bill, the fire department will be involved and they'll do inspections. After the bill is done, they'll pass us as far as, um, wheelchair accessibility, fire suppression, anything they need. And then during the event, they will be present every night of the event. And then if, um, the crowds get big enough, which we hope so, we're, we'll hire a sheriff's department to be a part of it, which we've done before.
And I, you said you've operated these for eight years. I'm not familiar with where that's been or, or can you kind of elaborate a little bit on where you've operated before?
One year in downtown Hiram, down, down in the gully, in, uh, Fliplane. And then we moved to Blair's Bridge Road and were there, uh, for seven years until, um, the, uh, Warner bought the property.
So, where are the containers, are they gonna be on the, uh, where are they gonna be located on the property, right north side of the lake or where?
They're gonna be right where the tree, where the entrance is. You'll have the containers on the left side and then the parking on the right side.
How much, uh, property or how much, uh, acreage do you need to operate this?
It's, the containers are gonna be like three, four, 200 by 200 feet. And then you're, you're gonna need another 40 feet around it.
Yeah, a little over an acre then.
Yeah. Doesn't take much, but.
Thank you.
Parking's bigger than the, uh, than the entertainment part of it.
Are there any, any other questions? Is there anyone else that wants to speak on behalf of this application? Thank you, Mr. Harrelson.
Thank you.
You've got time left. If, uh, you need to come back and do your presentation, you know, answer more questions you can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here against this application? Anyone here against this application? Seeing none? I'd like to say that I think it's anything that, that will help keep our kids, um, young adults out of, uh, harms way, keep them out of other counties, you know, during the Halloween time like this, I think it's a good thing to have. I saw the one in Hiram that he had. Uh, I was, you know, I, I was there and, um, yeah, they, they seemed to have a lot of fun, so, um, they, uh, like I said, keeping our young folks, uh, out of harms way, I think is, is a great thing to have. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Seeing none? Does anyone have a motion?
I make a motion to approve with nine listed stipulations.
Make a motion to approve with the nine listed stipulations?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fitzgerald, motion by Mr. Aston. All in favor of the application? That's gonna be 4-0 and 1. Mr. Harrelson, you'll have to be here on that same day, on the 13th. The final, like I said, this is a recommending board and the final vote is done with the commission board, so, uh, you'll have to be here for that meeting. I believe it's at 2 o'clock that afternoon?
Please, sir.
Okay. On the 13th. Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Robinson, you have something else?
We have a final agenda item. Uh, this is a zoning, zoning ordinance text amendment for a public hearing. Uh, the Polton County Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners are considering zoning text amendment to Title I Administration, Chapter 110, Definitions, Section 110-40, General Definitions, Title II Zoning, Chapter 210, Base Districts, Section 210-60, NPR, Master Plan Residential District, and Section 210-100, R55 Active Adult Residential District, Chapter 220, Overlay Districts, Section 220-20, Corridor Overlay District, Chapter 240, Standards Applying to All Districts, Section 24010, Dimensional Standards of Zoning Districts, Chapter 260, Off-Street Parking Standards, Section 260-20, Required Spaces, Chapter 280, Planning Commission, Section 280-140, Traffic Memo Report Contents, and Appendix, Section 3.0, List of Amendments of the Unified Development Ordinance for, Ordinance for Polton County, Georgia.
Thank you, Chris, for reading all that. Uh, good afternoon, Planning Commissioners, Board of Commissioners. Um, I'm gonna just briefly go over, um, this will be the ninth amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. I can't believe we adopted it, um, three years ago and, um, a lot of today's text amendments are, um, as a result of the moratorium that the Board of Commissioners enacted in January. But every time that we, um, take a look at something, um, we try to look at the entire, the ordinance in its entirety. Um, we are also working on getting the development regulations included into the Unified Development Ordinance and in reviewing our definitions. Today, we are recommending to amend four definitions, um, actually to add four definitions. That's building setback line, garage comma side entry, traffic impact analysis and traffic memo, which we'll discuss the traffic memo a little bit more when we get to the, the last part of this. Um, we are recommending to revise five definitions, accessory structures and uses, breeder. Um, if you recall our meeting last month where we had several dog breeders, we have made a recommendation to, um, change that definition to only allow a breeder to do a maximum of two litters per year. Also changing, this is one that is in comparing with the development regulations. We're changing the word county to match what the development regulation says, as well as the word lot, um, and the word street comma boulevard. Because the definition we had for the development regulations had a few more, a few more, um, just specifications that we wanted to pull over into the Unified Development Ordinance. Next, um, our changes to the Master Plan Residential District. Um, as I previously mentioned, this was a result of the moratorium that was adopted in January. Changes include raising the minimum house size from 1,800 to 2,400 square feet of heated living area. Um, we are striking townhouse dwellings from the list of special exception uses. We put in a little clarification on when you submit a site plan for a master plan residential. We want the existing topograph, topographic conditions with contour intervals, 10 feet or less for areas that are greater than 25 versus 30%. Few sections ahead, we are making some changes to the building design requirements. So, one of the requirements is that they submit color elevations demonstrating compliance with those requirements. We recommend changing the minimum front yard setback from 25 feet to 35 feet. And moving that back, we did not see the need to have a different setback for the garages, so we're striking that section. A group of, a group of staff and commissioners have been meeting, um, every other week and we met with the, the fire chief a few weeks ago. And we are looking to increase side yard setbacks for not only fire safety, but drainage safety, so that is a recommended change. Um, we are striking the lot size, area and setback requirements for townhouse dwellings since they will not be permitted any longer and renumbering the commercial section to fall in line. Another big change is the, some architectural requirements for houses in NPR. We would be requesting that they, building materials for the exterior walls be limited to the following, bricks, stones, cement board siding and glass. Vinyl components, not horizontal siding, may be permitted for aesthetic purposes with community development department approval. Building materials for roofs may be architecturally textured composition singles, shaped slate shingles and standing C metal. Flat roofs pitched less than 1 to 12 shall not be permitted on any building. Roof consisting more than 200 feet. Each home shall have a brick or stone water table installed at the front and sides at a minimum height of 24 inches. Each home shall be constructed with a rear deck, porch or patio that is not less than 100 square feet. And no single family dwelling shall be of the same front elevation design as any other house within two houses to each side of the subject lot nor directly across the street, nor shall a single front elevation design be applied to more than 20% of the front elevations within any single phase of a development. This would be called an anti-monotony, so that you can't just have the same house. You're gonna have to have a little variety. Um, in this section, we're also adding a Section C that would require sod to be installed on the front and side yards of each home prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Let's see. That is the summary of changes to the Master Plan Residential or NPR zoning district. Um, the moratorium also had us look at the R55 zoning district. Um, our recommendation is to raise the minimum lot size from 8,000 to 12,000 square feet. Make that minimum lot width at the building line 75 feet. Front yard setback 35 feet. The side yard setback in R55 is already 12 feet, but to counteract that, moving the front back, we're, um, reducing the rear yard setback to 20 feet. The next couple of sections, oop, nope, overlay districts. We are continuously working with DOT and looking at which streets should, um, the corridor overlay district apply to. Um, for clarity, we wanted to put the alternate names for US 278 of Wendy Bagwell Parkway and Rockmark Highway. And we're adding Brownsville Road, Dabs Bridge Road, Gold Mine Road, Gullidge Road, Harmony Grove Church Road, Harmony Grove Extension, Mulberry Rock Road, Old Cartersville Road and Sweetwater Church Road. So, any commercial development that came in on those would be required to meet the corridor overlay. The next section, and you can call this, I have to interject a little humor, you can call this the harbor freight rule. Um, we are putting in a requirement that the front of a building must face a public street. We are also requiring that no loading docks, overhead service doors, trash collection bins or accessory structures may be placed on or adjacent to any facade which faces a public street. We would prefer to see those on the back. Just added a little clarity about outdoor storage. We are changing that section to read no outside storage or display of merchandise shall be permitted on any lot for more than a 24-hour period. And then that accessory structure, just kind of reinforced that no accessory structure may be placed on or adjacent to any facade which faces a public street. Now, the next couple of section, these are just sort of housekeeping to update, um, in this dimensional standards of all zoning district to update the new front and side yard setbacks and to remove, um, single family attached from NPR since that would no longer be allowed. Next section would be to strike, um, the parking requirement for townhouse dwelling units, um, since that would no longer be applicable. And our last item today, we again worked with the Department of Transportation. Um, when you see a lot of the zoning cases, um, we have requirements for a, either a traffic impact analysis or a traffic memo. Um, I think in our last amendment, we adopted, we wrote down what is required for a traffic impact analysis, but we just referred to a traffic memo. So, um, DOT helped us out with what the requirements for a traffic memo would be. And that is the only other, we will, we will be amending the appendix, but the amendment to the appendix would only be to summarize the changes that are adopted by what is, um, proposed as Ordinance 25-04. I'll be happy to answer any questions or, um, just go ahead and give you a preview for May. We are doing another, um, text amendment application, so in this one, Chris, help me out, we'll be looking at definitions again. After meeting about the side yard setback, we're probably increasing the side yard setbacks in some other residential zoning districts to that minimum of 12 feet. And looking to do some clarification in Chapter 280 about when a site plan amendment is needed and, um, coming soon. We'll have to wait another month to see what else we have.
Does anybody on the Planning Commission have any questions or comments on, or suggestions? I have a few that I need, that I wanted to bring up. As far as the R55, um, I would have liked to include it in that, in our development standards, the inclusion of the bell type alarm, uh, heat alarm in the structures. Because people that, elderly people that, when they take their hearing aids and that aids out at night, they don't hear the high frequency of a smoke alarm. They, but they will hear the bell of one of those bell type alarms. They're less than a hundred dollars, I think. I talked to a developer this past week about it and he thought it was a great idea. Also, I would like to say, we're already putting sprinklers in carports, why not have a single sprinkler in the kitchen area? Because a majority of fires in developments are either due to smoking or especially in, in the more elderly homes, is either smoking or kitchen fires from cooking. more elderly homes, is either smoking or kitchen fires from cooking. And that would be a big safety issue, not that much money in the development. Again, he thought that was a great idea, because you're already doing the sprinklers in the carports for a vehicle.
Smoke detector or a sprinkler?
Both. Because that heat, if you've got a hot fire, if you've got something in the hallway, that it will set that alarm off, it gives them a chance to get out of the house. Especially when you got, I have worked house fires that elderly people didn't get out because the amount of time it took for them to get out. And it could possibly make a difference. Like I said, not that much money involved when you're talking about life. And one other safety measure that I would like to see, and I don't know if it covers this, but in front of commercial buildings, banks, grocery stores, things like that, I think we need to mandate the columns in front of it, the steel and concrete columns in front of entrances to keep vehicle intrusion from going in, into businesses like that. We just had a bank in Hiram a couple of months ago, where the guy drove all the way to the front counter of the bank. He thought he was hitting the brake and he was hitting the gas.
Bollards.
Huh?
It was bollards.
Yeah, bollards is what they're called. But I've noticed even on, like on the Ingalls at Nebo, if somebody had come off Dallas Nebo and had a seizure or something happened, and they happen to be going toward an entrance, they could drive practically to the back counter of the building before, you know, before the Starbucks was put in place, but they could, you know, it'd be easily done that way, and it could be a terrorist activity. You don't ever know, want something like that, but that would be a safety issue that we, as a county, we could, in the development standards, include that might make a huge difference. Gas stations, same thing. As far as the breeders, I think there needs to be a maximum amount of animals that should be in a house. We just had one back last month. She had 13 of her own animals in the house, plus whatever, you know, else she could have had. There's no, we should have a minimum when you have a breeder like this. To me, it'd be a sanitation issue to have six animals would be, is my opinion, would be the maximum. If they had more than that, they should be in a necessary structure, just for the sanitation of it all. That's my opinion. And I'd like to see Nebo and Dallas Nebo, Bakers Bridge and Pine Valley Road in District 3 added to those corridors because of the impact and the growth of that area. And another thing that I would like to see is, any development that's over 100 homes, I believe if they're going out and on to either a major county road or a state road, it should be mandatory that they put in a roundabout instead of a red light there, because the county has to maintain the red lights. The roundabouts are a lot safer than red lights are, and you get down to it, there's not that tremendous amount of cost difference by the time you buy the red light, install the red light. It would make a big difference to the county as far as how much money is spent around about versus a red light. They're much safer. Anybody else have anything?
What were, Bakers Bridge, Nebo, what was the other road?
Dallas Nebo and Pine Valley.
Jason, help me out. What can we, we can only make amendments to what we advertised, so I think adding streets to the list that the corridor overlay applies to.
Well, we're here for public input.
Right.
The Board of Commissioners should consider. Anybody that was here, present, and watching, heard what the recommendation and opinion was, I think we're okay.
Okay. And I did forget one of the things on our May agenda. We have worked with animal control, and before we made an amendment about number of animals, I would want to talk with animal control. They've had some concerns about, especially livestock, so we're looking to make some changes to that, so I think we could, I think we advertised that section, so I think we can catch that in the May item. We have the streets, could make the recommendation about the changes to R-55, because that's been advertised. Bollards, I would want to talk to probably the building inspector and the fire marshal to make sure that we get the language.
And we have several around the county that have them installed.
Yeah, we have, here.
But, you know, like I said, and the manager there, Ingalls, not talking about it. That's a long stretch from Dallas Nebo to there, then if somebody had a seizure driving, there could be a great loss of life there. You know, it could be an intentional act nowadays. It's hard to tell, but it'd keep them from intruding into the building. So, you know, if they hit any other place along, they've got, they've got brick structure and other structure that's included in the construction of the building that will hold it. Those glass doors would be no contest for them to drive right on through. So that's my thoughts, that's something to look at.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, the Master Plan Residential, what's the minimum lot size? Is it eight?
12,000 square.
It's 12?
Yeah.
Didn't it used to be eight?
Yes.
But it's 12 now.
PRD is eight. NPR, be able to tell in a second. No, NPR's always been 12,000, minimum. Because NPR is fairly new. It was adopted in 2020.
Was it NPR eight at one time?
No, PRD.
PRD.
Has a minimum of 8,000. I think NPR's always been a minimum of 12,000 square feet.
So on the R-55, we've changed that to 12,000. Does that just cross the board?
Yes.
It's not a perceived injury, is it, like that?
Yeah. That's the recommendation.
Anyone else have a comment? Thank you, ma'am.
Well, we do need a recommendation, so.
Does anybody else have an asthma concern that they want to bring up? We need to, we need to vote on this zoning amendment, don't we?
Vote on a recommendation? Prior to doing that, if you would open it up to the public for any comments that they may have.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to comment on the zoning ordinance text amendments that we've discussed today? Or if you have an idea of your own that you want to bring forward? Hearing none. I'll close the public portion of the amendment, and I'll call for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to have a motion first?
Yep. Need a motion.
I guess I want to make sure I'm clear.
Okay.
So we've got the recommendations that we've all went through, and then the addition of the items that Mr. Leggett has put in. Some of them need further clarification, some of them need further collaboration, but some of them can be potentially added into this because they were advertised, you know, for that purpose. Is it something that we can do a vote for these specific ones, and then because we have other text amendments that are going to be coming in in May, the ones that Mr. Leggett has presented can be further investigated and reviewed, and then incorporated into the May's meeting? Or do we need to go ahead and have the recommendation include what can be included in these recommendations?
Mr. Wicks, since there is a proposal on the floor, I think that one option is to...
Of course, recommend approval or denial. You could recommend approval as drafted, and recommend to staff that they consider the comments made at this public hearing for purposes of the next amendment that appears to be readily on the horizon. Or you could make a recommendation for approval with specific additional language, based on what you've heard today. That obviously will be a little bit more complicated to do, but it's within your discretion.
If with that, then I would make a motion to approve the drafted text amendments as presented with staff review of the items that were presented in today's meeting, so that they can be potentially incorporated into the May text amendments when they are presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wicks, second by Mr. Callahan. Do I have a vote? Be 4-0, 1. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just wanted to, just remind everybody, the next Planning Commission is Tuesday, May 27th at 2:00 p.m. That is the day after Memorial Day weekend. So just wanted to make sure we, that's time people go on vacations and such, that we just want to make sure we might have a quorum, so we may be seeing an email asking if you'll be available on May 27th.
I think I've already seen one.
Oh, I'll just be done then.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Fitzgerald made a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wicks. All in favor? All right. The 4-0 run, thank you for coming today.